We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Adams, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, as we come together to renew our dedication to the principles upon which these officials were elected, we enter to learn, we go forth to serve, we pray that we may be fulfilled inwardly as we serve others outwardly. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A clerk call the roll?
Mr. Nieper?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Teppin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here. There are no amendments to tonight's agenda. The consent calendar?
Mr. President, I move that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and Items B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication, or Item A, receive, file, and approve of Item A, and receive and file Items B, C, and D. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to removal of assessments.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication number two be received and filed, and that legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities regarding legislation to pay the annual license fee to the Ohio EPA.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication number three be received and filed.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Deputy Director of Utilities requesting legislation to renew the agreement with GE Intellect Platforms.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication number four be received and filed and authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number four and to authorize the Law Director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a partnership agreement for the southeast, west, regional water line improvement area.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President?
Mr. Teppin?
I move that Communication number six be received, filed, legislation upon tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for cash advances.
Mr. President?
Mr. Teppin?
I move that Communication number seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to sell vacant land.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nieper?
I move that Communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation appointing J. Howard Elstro as authorized agent for seeing the public assistance grant program.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nieper?
I move that Communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number ten.
From the Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with D. L. Steiner, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nieper?
I move that Communication number ten be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eleven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to amend Ordinance 16112.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nieper?
I move that Communication number eleven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number eleven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number twelve.
From the Law Director regarding legislation for assignment of agreements with BEF Foods, Inc.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Communication number twelve be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive and file Communication number twelve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under reports of officials, Chief Martin, the annual report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of council. Actually, my time up here is going to be very brief. I just want to take this moment to introduce Major Angel Cortez, which, as I believe everyone on council certainly knows, but for those that are perhaps watching by television, earlier this year, at the end of March of this year, Major Richard Shade retired from his position as a major with Lima Police Department, and Angel Cortez was promoted from lieutenant to the position of major to take his place. As a result of that, there were some changeovers in duties and responsibilities, one of which has been assigned to Major Cortez, is to complete our annual report each year. And so that's why we're a little bit late this year in getting it out because of the transition there and the delay that that caused. But at this point in time, I would just like Major Cortez to come forward, and I will allow him to highlight the work that he's done.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I'm glad you passed these out.
So do we.
Being graded.
That'll work. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Like the chief said, this did take a little longer than we planned on, but due to the change in personnel, that's the primary reason. I'm only going to take a couple minutes of your time because I don't normally like to talk in front of people anyways. The 2011 report was made possible through an effort involving administrative services and input from supervisors of all shifts and divisions and specialty groups. This report documents a commendable body of work performed by our professional men and women of the LPD over the 2011 calendar year. As we know, every department in the city has had to stretch the taxpayers' dollars to accomplish our task. The Police Department is no exception. The accomplishments listed in this report took place with limited resources and dollars and manpower. The loss of manpower was due for a variety of reasons, including the retirement of Chief Garlock in April 2011. Sergeant Chevalli also retired in January of 2011 with 35 years of service. Officer Bob Sarchet retired with 33 years of service. Sergeant Andy Green and Patrolman Ingleman were deployed to Afghanistan in September 2011. Patrolman Shepard continues to serve his country in active military duty stateside. Patrolman Woodruff is now a Lima firefighter. And we lost Patrolman Howingstein to the Ohio State Patrol. And finally, we did have one other officer resign. Despite these limited resources and challenges, the men and women of the LPD answered 43,281 calls for service in 2011. That is an increase of 2,169 calls for service over 2010. Of those calls, as outlined in the chief's report, the number of uniform crime report, or UCR Part I crimes for 2011 remained nearly unchanged from the number reported in 2010. Those Part I crimes include homicide, rape, robbery, assault, ag assault, burglary, arson, and various theft offenses. The total number for Part I crimes in 2011 was 3938 compared to 3924 in 2010. It is an increase of .36 percent, but considering our resources and our manpower and the increase in calls, I think the men and women of the Lima Police Department did an exceptional job in 2011. Obviously, we're going to continue to work diligently with the partnerships that we've established in our community to make those calls go down even more next year. As far as the patrol shifts go in this report, you'll see that patrol shifts continue to work hard to provide the citizens of this community the professional police services they deserve and have come to expect from us. Our staff has been tasked to continue to deliver these services despite the reduction in manpower, as I outlined, and increase in call load. From the individual shift reports, you'll see that the efforts by our officers, you'll see the efforts by our officers, and you will also read some success stories just to give you a small example of what these officers and dispatchers face on a daily basis. It's for that reason Lima Police Department is committed to continual training and professional development of all our personnel. In February, as we do every year, we conducted a two-week training block for our personnel covering a variety of topics, including but not limited to search and seizure, law review, CPR, and so on. We also conducted a 40-hour in-house bike school. Also investigative services alone accounted for more than 700 hours of training. Under investigative services, as you might know, falls the PACE unit, computer forensics, juvenile division, property officers as well. They were assigned 936 felony cases, which is also an increase of 100 over 2010. Juvenile officers were assigned 178. And identification entered 2,616 pieces of property, that's two officers. The West Central Ohio Crime Task Force investigated 570 cases, which cases is part of, and served 44 search warrants in 2011. The money they recovered from those search warrants equaled over $94,000. Our computer forensics investigated over 81 cases. In July of 2011, we auctioned off surplus property and unclaimed property, and after all expenses were paid, we netted over $18,000 for the City of Lima. Through 2011, we were able to hire four new officers to help us compensate for those that we lost. We also hired two new communications operators to fill the vacancies in those areas. If you notice on the graphs in your reports, which I'm sure that's what everybody's interested in, the calls for service and their award. The temporal heat index, calls are broken down by hour of day and day of the week. They range from a low of 70 calls on Tuesdays at 5:00. Those calls are accumulated from the whole year, 5:00 in the morning, to a high of 468 calls on Monday at 1,600 hours or 4:00 p.m. Also of note is that on Saturdays at midnight is the third highest calls for service throughout the year. We'll continue to use this data for resource allocation special ops and to report back to the citizens of this community. And one last thing I'd like to mention is that we are in our 33rd year of being in a partnership with the Lima Noon Optimist Club for Safety City. And to say the least, I imagine Safety City has a huge impact on the children that we won't see till years down the road. Safety City, Officer Davis-Donnell and his volunteers have touched the lives of over 10,000 children this year through field trips, summer academy, school events, community safety presentations, and Rad Kids. Also, Safety City last year had almost 7,000 children for trick-or-treat going through their facility. And as you know, the renovation project is now underway, and hopefully by next year, we'll have our Lima Police Department building up and working hard to get that done, actually by the end of this year. And you'll be hearing more about that later, something we could all be proud of. But it's with great pride that I present to you a small, small piece of what the Lima Police Department has done and what its officers have done. And a copy of this report is going to be available on the website as soon as we get our personnel back to put it on there. If you have any questions or if you need any more copies, I'll be more than happy to respond to it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Hope that wasn't too long.
No, you're fine.
Good.
Next on the agenda, committee reports, the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. All members of council have received a copy of the report of the committee. The meeting was August 27 at 5:30 p.m. Members present of the committee was Counselor Derry Glenn, Counselor Sam McLean, and myself as chairperson. The subject was the civil penalties and fines. This was the second meeting held on this subject since it had been referred. And like I said, I won't go through the report other than to express that, you know, a lot of good discussion, issues, concerns were brought up, and the committee, the issue is still in committee as a motion was made to adjourn, and some requests were made of Ms. Odom to supply the committee members the property checklist, and also a copy of a letter that the resident receives currently explaining the fines and the process. With that, Mr. President, the motion was made to adjourn at 6:42. I respectfully submit this and ask for the committee report to be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report as stated and as submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next is the Human Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, like Ms. Adams, this report was in the packet. I hope everybody's had a chance to read it. And with that, I will move that it is received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion in the second is to receive, file, and approve the committee report from the Human Resources Committee as submitted by Counselor Townsend. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 18412.
This is the second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with HMS Employer Solutions.
Mr. President?
Ms. Townsend?
I move that Ordinance 18412 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 18412 on its second reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Nieper?
Just as a kind of parlaying from the committee report, which ironically appeared directly before this ordinance reading, I still don't think that it's necessary to expend the funds to do this project. Counselor Teppin actually had the best suggestion in the committee meeting when he said that an employer in which he formerly worked for simply sent out the survey to all employees, and they were required to send it back, or they were off the plant. And I'm not sure why, I'm not sure if that, it did not appear as if that was even an option that was ever on the table. So at this point, I'm not prepared to approve this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nieper. Is there any further discussion? I'll have a clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 18412 will go on third reading with a four-to-four vote. Ordinance 19212.
This is the second reading enacting Section 1602.03 and repealing Section 1602.08 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio to require an application permit for bonfires.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that 19212 be passed on its second reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19212 on its second reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Nieper?
I don't want to sound like a broker record, but I just wanted to point out or thank the fire chief for his clarity on this at the committee meeting the other evening. I wish every piece of legislation we had was given the time that Chief Heffner took to explain this and answer questions. There were some concerns and some concerned citizens, but he was very upfront and feel very good about what we're doing tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nieper. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 19212 has been passed on its second reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19412.
Leaving specialist assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Ordinance Number 194-12 be passed.
Second.
Yeah, be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19412 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I just want to publicly make note that these are the property maintenance code charges, being assessed the property. We have a listing here, and it totals $175,821.09. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 19412 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19512.
Removing property maintenance assessments on certain parcels of real estate in the City of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Ordinance Number 19512 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass Ordinance 19512 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
In contrast to that number I just gave you on the assessment, this is assessments to be removed, and it totals $5,421.07. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 19512 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19612.
Amending the 2012 annual budget.
Mr. President?
Mr. Teppin?
I move that Ordinance 19612 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, second, is to pass Ordinance 19612 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 19612 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19712.
Authorizing cash advances from the General Fund to certain other funds and for reimbursement back to the General Fund.
Mr. President?
Mr. Teppin?
I move that Ordinance 19712 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 19712 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 19712 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19812.
Authorizing the mayor to assign agreements with Kettle Creations, Inc. to BEF Foods, Inc.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that Ordinance 19812 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 19812 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
This is the, came from Kettle Creations to the new Bob Evans facility, where it's continuing a agreement we had with Kettle Creations for an employment package that they had with us. If they do as well as what Kettle Creations have, we're going to be ahead on this. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 19812 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 19912.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Harris Computer Systems.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Ordinance 19912 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 19912 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 19912 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 212.
Amending Ordinance 16112.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nieper?
I move that Ordinance Number 212 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 212 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nieper?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Teppin?
Yes.
Ordinance 212 has been passed on its first reading by an eight-to-zero vote. Ordinance 201-12.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of equipment for the wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that Ordinance 20112 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 20112 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ordinance 19812 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20212.
Authorizing the auditor to reimburse the Allen County engineer for the paving of Sunderland Road.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 20212 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20212 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance 20212 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20312.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a collaborative partnership agreement for the design of the southeast regional water line improvement area.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 20312 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20312 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance 20312 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20412.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with DL Steiner, Inc.
Mr. President.
Mr. Nefer.
I move that ordinance number 20412 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20412 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance 20512 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 20312.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a collaborative partnership agreement for the design of the southeast regional water line improvement area.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 20312 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20312 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance 20512 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote with one abstention. Ordinance 20612.
Authorizing the mayor to transfer real estate to Paul George Han Jr. and Sandra Kayhan.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 20612 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 20612 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Nefer?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ordinance 20612 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Miss Linius Business, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I only have one item this evening. Hope Neighborhood will be meeting October 2nd, Tuesday, at 6:30 at Unity School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, I got a couple things here. We've been having a lot of problems with people dumping their alleys. Now, it's against the law. Anyone putting out the garbage, they're doing jobs. We have some on Jameson Alley. We've got some garbage thrown out there on Nye Street, and we got some over here on F Oak. And we had calls all this weekend that someone doing that. So I'm hoping that you take the tag number down and give me a call. I know we picked up some on Jameson Street Alley. There was a lot there, and I appreciate the guy helping me out there. Took his time off in the football game, and he was back there and seen all that garbage got thrown out back there. So I'm asking you, please kindly, please, you can't do that. You know you can't do, it's against the law to take jobs. And I'm hoping that if any stuff they dump out, any job that he or she had done for you, and your name come up on some of the trash he dumped out, I'm hoping that the law director will prosecute you on that, because it's not fair to the people having dumped stuff out. It's a couch out there on Nye Street, when I was on my way to city council, slaying out in front of the house, that somebody dumped out. So I will be getting that taken care tomorrow, you know, because as soon as I got off work, someone had called me about it was dumped out there. Also, we will be, Friday, I will be turning the list of names. Any streets I miss, please give me a call, but I will be returning the street names that we asked for payment for 2013. And we will be finishing up this Friday on the Curbs, on State, State Street, F Oak Street, Am, and also Elmwood Place. We had a couple places out there, and I will be continuing going around asking, do you want these things? And I will get that to the law director. The deadline is Friday, so we're trying to get all these in right now. I thank the mayor for coming out to the meeting. I didn't get to make it, we had some, some came up at work and I couldn't make it, but a lot of folks telling me, they heard some good things out the meeting, so thank him and the administrator for coming out for that. We are going to be doing our educator of the week. We're going to continue doing that. We know Honor Roll will be coming out next month, so we want the kids to come out to city council. We are a sponsor for that and continue doing that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn, Ms. Townsend.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Mr. Nefer?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. McLean? I have one item today. I'd like to remind everyone that the Fraternal Order of Police is going to have their Pancake Day on Saturday, October 6th, at the FOP Hall on Rob Avenue. It starts at 6:00 a.m. and goes till 2:00 p.m. I'm sure you can find advance tickets at the police station, and other officers got them, I'm sure. So please support a worthy cause for the FOP.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo the words that was mentioned earlier. I want to thank Chief Hefner and Chris Jackson. I think we had a very successful Neighborhood Concerns Committee meeting. It became very well-prepared, and it was the first time in a long time, and it went really, really smooth. And I want to thank the chief and my head officer, Chris, for holding on to excellent meetings with us, and listen to the concerns of the individuals that came to the meeting. I would also like to state that I have received a lot of phone calls about different areas within the ward, where individuals are hanging outside of businesses, and residents are complaining that there's other activities going on. Earlier before we came into council, I asked Chief of Police, Chief Martin, if he would speak on this issue briefly and address those concerns to the individuals, and what they have in common to this.
Mr. President. As Mr. Lowe stated, he did speak to me before council meeting tonight, and basically the concern is regarding persons loitering on business properties, and in all likelihood taking away from the intended business at those places. And if there's any business owner that has people that are hanging out on their property that concern them, then they certainly are encouraged to call the Lima Police Department. We will go out and let the person know that they are not welcome on that property at the owner's request or the employee's request at the business. We will issue a formal trespass notice against that person, so if the person comes back again, then the business owners or employees can contact the prosecutor's office regarding filing criminal trespass charges against the unwanted people. Also, as many people may not be aware, if there are any concerns regarding a business, its security, or how they could perhaps make it more secure, surveillance systems that they could put in place, crime prevention through environmental design, changes that